Can I just test the sound online? Lucy McMahon's staff member is attending. Lucy, can you hear us okay? Lucy, hi. She's just unmuted. Lucy, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see so many of you here this evening. And thank you for joining us. This is the meeting of Froome Town Council. I'm Philip Companion. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everyone, we've got people online and here in the room. For those in the room, a little housekeeping. The emergency exit is in the corner of the room. The assembly point is the far side of the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor through the doors on the right. And there is an accessible toilet to the right of the lift. As I've mentioned before, help yourselves to tea and coffee during the meeting. You're most welcome to do that. Tonight, Paul Clark, Laura, Sarah, Sean and Rachel will manage the minutes, question board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel tomorrow. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand. And for anyone else, ask questions through the Q and A board, please. Okay, the agenda for this evening. First item, apologies, Paul, please.
Yes, we've had apologies from Carla Colonnett, Mark Dorrington, Fiona Barrows, Ben Stills, Tracey Ashford and Polly Lamb.
Okay to accept those? Yep, proposed Anne, seconded Steve. Unanimous. Thank you. Declaration of councillors' interests. Do we have any declarations of interests that need to be made this evening from councillors? Lisa.
I'm an FTC representative on the Badgers Hill Stadium project for the Froome Town Benefit Society.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. That's noted. Any others?
I'm not sure if I need to declare this, but I am a member of the CBS. Not sure if that's a requirement.
Yeah, I think that would be a personal interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I too have to declare that I am a member of CBS. Anyone else? Points on it.
It's a really good point, Anita. Could I just hands up who would be declaring a personal interest as a member of the Badgers Hill? So Laura, we got those? Yeah, Mel, Anita, Philip and Lisa. Lisa's probably got a prejudicial interest, I suggest.
Okay, next, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting on the 17th of January. Nick? Got a question?
Kind of reading through the minutes, of course, we all do before we come. And I noticed that whilst I'm mentioned often in the minutes, I'm shown as not present at the top. So if you wouldn't mind just adding me, please. I just feel a bit left out. Pedanty, I know, but there you go.
Not a pedantic tool, sorry about that, Nick. What I'll do, I'll handwrite you in and get Philip to initial that was a correction.
Are we happy then with the minutes? No other questions? Yep. Okay, proposed Lisa, seconded Sarah.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, item two on the agenda, questions and comments from the public, please. I believe we have a few. Bill, if you'd like to grab a microphone, please.
Thanks, Chairman, members. I'd like the town council... Thank you. I'd like to raise an issue regarding Alexandra Road and invite the town council to carry out a consultation exercise with regard to an experimental traffic regulation order to make the street one-way from south to north. That would complement what was done 30 years ago when Kifir would have made a one-way street from north to south. The issue is the increased amount of rat running along Alexandra Road and the conflicting traffic movements where essentially it's a single carriageway road due to on-street parking by residents, I'm one of them. And there is conflict where cars literally drive towards each other. No one gives way. And it's a discernible problem. And it's just getting worse as a result of various developments that have happened in Froome. And it will no doubt get worse as and when Saxon Vale gets developed. The answer to this is fairly simple. There's an expedient where one could put a planter at the bottom of the Alexandra Road junction with Portway. That would make the ultimate traffic light junction that's proposed for Saxon Vale work much better, hopefully preserve the post office and also introduce a planter at the bottom of the Somerset Hill junction so that cars can only move one-way from south to north along that northern section of Alexandra Road. It would ultimately help in achieving what I would regard as a low-traffic neighbourhood for the area and make the street a much more pleasant place in which to live. Thanks, Chairman. So I'd like an undertaking from the meeting to initiate a consultation with residents with a view to seeing whether this is going to have any legs and will have local support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, council can't decide to do that because it's not on the agenda. But I think could we allocate members' staff just to explore that further with you and then take it forward?
Just, I just want to flag this up as something that really does need to address, be addressed, because it has become much more noticeable, certainly in the last few months, of the amount of rat running along Alexandra Road. Thanks.
Okay, Lisa, do you want to come in as Ward councillor? Yep?
I'll pick that up.
Okay, thank you for that, Bill. Do we have any other questions from the public at this stage? Matters not relating to any of the agenda items to follow? Nope. Any questions and comments from councillors? From town councillors? Froome Town councillors first, sorry. Nope. Any questions from Dawn?
Thank you. So yesterday, after an eight-hour and 18-minute council meeting, we were all greyer and very tired. But we managed to avert the S114 notice. So at this stage, everything is balanced according to law. But we're not sure how long that will last for. And there's obviously a lot of work to do in order to make sure that that remains the case. So yeah, that's pretty much all that I have to mention about that and what's in my report. But I'll hand over to Adam, if that's okay?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Dawn, and thank you for your report that you submitted beforehand. Thank you. Adam?
Hi, yeah. I actually voted for that as well. I'm the only one of the Froome councils that did, I think, because it's the Lib Dem administration that proposed the budget. If we hadn't accepted the budget in full council, then the finance officer would have had no option but to serve a 114 notice. And that would have given us a three-week period. And commissioners would have come in and so on. It would have been more expensive and more damaging. But even so, we've just about made it as a council to get a balanced and agreed budget. It depends on the government fulfilling their verbal agreement, I think, to agree the capitalisation direction for 37 million. I think of assets and commercial investments that the council will then start to sell and use part of the revenue or loan against it to fill the budget hole. It depends also on transformation and about 1,000 redundancies, which is about between 20 and 26% of the entire Somerset Council workforce being made redundant. And the council basically ending up doing a lot less with a lot less people. But the impact of that has all got to be worked out because there's no actual plan for that yet. We don't know who's going to be made redundant exactly, which roles are going. And looking ahead to the next financial year, 2025, 26, it's very bleak. There's about 79 million in the hot budget black hole at the moment. And the finance officer doesn't see a way around it yet at all. Because once you sell assets, commercial investments, you can't sell them again. If the government's not going to allow an increase in council tax this year, that doesn't help in the future. So we're basically relying on the next government to help fix the problem. And the Deloitte Committee identified a £4 billion black hole across England for local authorities and Somerset is part of that. So there's details on my website and linking through to the papers and so on. And just ask me if you need any more information about that. But my question to you is, what more detailed conversations have you been having with Somerset Council about the CCTV, the toilets and any other services which are being devolved or assets which are being passed down? Thank you.
Got it. Max? So on the one hand, fantastic that you've avoided the 114. On the other hand, clearly it's not solved the problem. So I'm glad that you raised the issue of what discussions we've been having. I kind of think Paul can probably update you more on the detail of that. But what I would say quite candidly is we've not really moved very far, as far as I'm aware. And if you look across the whole of Somerset to parish council precept raises, it looks like if you add it all together, parishes have decided to precept their citizens to the tune of about £10 million across the county. What I don't see, apart, I can hear it from the politicians, but what we don't see it from the officers, I don't think, is any keenness to actually take up any of that. You know, so very little is actually being devolved. We still lack basic information on what's available. We still don't really understand the costs of things. And it seems like so many barriers get put in our way when we try and take certain things on. So, you know, we can't just take on a particular service or a particular function. We have to take on a slice of the very expensive contract that goes with it. You know, we have to chupi staff into us. There's a whole bunch of things which I think are just standing in the way. And if I could ask you with your hotline to Bill Revins to kind of raise this, because I kind of think it's a real issue, I think. I think there's a danger that councils will precept loads of money and then actually not be able to spend it because the pace of devolution is so slow, because the behaviour of officers is so defensive. It's almost like they don't see that there's a financial crisis in front of them. And so we're experiencing a lot of very old-fashioned behaviours of kind of real defensiveness around things, not letting things go and failing to see Froome or indeed any other place as places. They just see them as kind of, you know, kind of slices of their own siloed organisation. So you can't have a conversation about the market yard. You have to have one conversation about toilets, one conversation about car parks, one conversation, you know, it's all very split up. So there doesn't seem to be any particular enthusiasm for devolution, despite the fact that I think parishes have heard the call, stepped up, wanted to avoid the 114. But if Somerset Council don't take advantage of that, then you're going to be in a worse position than you already are, I think.
Okay, Max. Paul, do you want to come in?
What he said, absolutely. The very specific detail. We are making slightly better-than-glacial progress. I'm not sure what the right word would be, on discussions around the toilet and CCTV. That was two services explicitly that are going to be cut on the 31st of March unless something happens. All of the towns that have CCTV in Somerset are quite cross, I think, that the CCTV problem is solved because all the towns are paying for it. That's not the case. None of them have agreed to pay for it. They want to talk, we want to talk, but it would be wrong to get the impression, I think, and say this kind of publicly, because this council certainly hasn't agreed to pay any CCTV. The toilet one is in a similar situation. We're talking to Somerset Council about keeping the toilets open and paying the ID Verdi contract, which Max implied appears rather expensive, without any guarantee what will happen in a year's time at the moment. And I think that is a really worrying thing for this council. So here's a cheque for £24,000. Is it going to close this time next year? Are you going to flog it off to anyone? Having those detailed conversations is proving really, really hard at the moment. And we are not alone. We're not being victimised in Froome. It's a cultural issue, I think, that Max has really well described.
Nick and then Mel.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. Yeah, just one of the things that came up recently. I was trying to devise ways to encourage events in the town centre, more businesses to think about innovative ways to bring people in. And I don't know if you're aware, but the cost now of applying to close a road has reached, it's now £495 to close a road for one day. So that is really challenging for businesses who want to do that and may close a street to put on an event and also for residents if they want to have a street party. And I mean, everyone appreciates that we're in a very challenging time financially. But to just push down costs in a way that then prevents or stops people doing the things that we want them to do to build active communities, a resilient town centre, is pretty counterproductive.
Thanks, Nick. Mel?
Having struggled with Mendip and the County Council for a decade in terms of their cultural preferences, I'm not surprised to hear what Max has said. I wonder whether, and this is probably addressed more to Paul, whether it's time to get the bigger towns in Somerset together through the Somerset Association of Local Councils. Because our voice is so much stronger when there's a group of us. We have tried that in the past and not been too successful. But this is really kind of probably the major issue that's going to be around for the next generation. So people may be more forthright and willing to actually sit down and talk together. So one Saturday morning somewhere in the centre of Somerset, you could see quite a productive meeting and maybe the leaders of the County Council could come along and listen and be part of the conversation too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mel. Paul, come back and then Andy.
Part of that, we've organised as a group of the kind of half-dozen bigger towns. And we're meeting with Duncan Starkey, the chief exec, to discuss this cultural issue explicitly at the beginning of April. That was the first time, 4th of April. So that's the kind of, at the officer level that we're doing. I mean, we wrote to him last week and said enough's enough, come on now. And to his credit, he's come back and said, okay, I'll meet up with you on the 4th of April.
He's come back on that quickly? Yeah. If nothing comes of that, and I hope it does, perhaps we should just get a group of rabid councillors together and make it a bit more emphatic in terms of its message. So I'll leave that with you.
Was that rabbit or rabid? Andy Jones?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. Anne Hills and I are on the board of Salk now. So if there is anything that we need to bring, there's a meeting on next Friday late afternoon, Paul. So if you need us to raise something there to support your arguments, just drop me a line.
The combination of the detail I've been talking about and what Max has been talking about generally, I think, take that forward because you will not be alone.
Great, thank you all very much.
I'll feed this back, I'll feed back to Somerset Council like now, in a minute, and see what I can do. Thanks.
Much appreciated. Thank you, Adam and Dawn, for both of your reports. Thank you. Okay, item number three, an update on Froome Safer School Streets project. I believe that is Peter and Katie presenting, please.
Good evening, everyone. And as the Chair has indicated, Katie and I are going to do a double act tonight. And before we actually move to provide an update, we thought it would be helpful, particularly as councillors haven't received a report on school streets for a little while, to just highlight the reasons why we believe we're involved with this project to take you back to why this is so important. And I wanted to start really with information that we received from both Avanti and Oakfield Academy Schools in relation to the concerns that teachers had about the safety of the streets outside the school gate. We were aware of this before this project was initiated. And we were also hearing at that time, when we actually started the project, about concerns amongst the community, the wider community, about safety. And so very much, school streets is about responding to those concerns. And really what we're trying to achieve is a much safer, more pleasant street environment around schools, not just for schoolchildren, but also their parents and for others using the street. Another objective that we have is to encourage active travel and to encourage more and more young people to actually walk and cycle to and from school. We know from the work that we've been doing through Green and Healthy Froome that there are health and wellbeing benefits associated with that. So those really are the main drivers behind this particular project. And I just wanted to highlight also what the experience is elsewhere. We're not alone in actually promoting a school streets project here in Froome. There are some 400 projects across the UK. So there's a lot of experience that has built up over the years and a lot of evidence has built up as to the benefits of these schemes. And I just wanted to highlight very quickly some research that was published in 2022 by the Road Safety Trust. They focused particularly in their report on Birmingham, which has 17 school streets. And there, traffic volumes have reduced overall. And this is the experience in other places too, not just in Birmingham. And that's highlighted in the report. The other important consideration, and the report makes this very clear, is that nationally, there's been no significant traffic displacement to surrounding streets after the initial adjustment period. So we do anticipate that there will be a short period when drivers in particular adjust to the new arrangements. But our expectation, based on the evidence from other schemes, is that things will settle down and that overall there will be no significant traffic displacement. However, this is a trial and we need to see how it works in Froome. And I just wanted to quickly highlight where else school streets are in operation. The biggest concentration is actually in London. There are some in the South West, but there are lots of other parts of the country where either school streets are in operation or are proposed. So this is a very popular initiative nationally. And as I indicated, the research suggests that there are positive outcomes from school streets. I'm now going to hand over to Katie, who's going to take you through our community engagement work. Katie?
It's Peter. So how will we engage the community in this process? We held seven co-design events between September and October 2021. Further concept design consultations took place in April 22, which included several weeks of drop-in sessions here at the Town Hall and requests for online feedback via Commonplace. Articles were published and leaflets were sent out in the Froome Times. Some 8,000 letters were sent to residents with updated links to surveys. We also met with school staff who, as Peter mentioned, are very much in support of the scheme because they have, they all have, it seems, concerns about the safety outside their school gates. You can see here, we've got the plans. These have been downstairs for a couple of weeks in the foyer at the Town Hall. And we welcome all public to come and have a look. We hope that there will always be someone on hand to answer any questions you have. So please do come and have a look at them after tonight. They'll be back down in the foyer for the duration of the trial. It's also worth noting that we see that the majority of respondents to our surveys are in support of the scheme. So we've been working closely with the schools and engaging the students of Oakfield Academy, Trinity First School, Critchill School and Avanti Park in conversations and activities to promote active travel and the benefits to us all. So amongst other things, we've taken out groups of students to do walking wheel mapping, which will create maps of timed routes that we hope that will be posted on school websites, will be available to all families. And we presented and discussed the benefits of active travel to ourselves and our local environment. We've had a very exciting visit to all four schools from the BMX champion Matty Hemmings, who delivered an amazing BMX flat land stunt show. Doctor Bike from Froome Community Bike Project will be visiting schools in the coming weeks to offer free safety checks to everyone who cycles to school or who wants to bring their bike to school. And this is ahead of the nationwide Big Walk and Wheel Active Travel Challenge, which happens in the last couple of weeks before the Easter holidays, which is quite timely for us, a great opportunity to talk about all of the benefits of active travel. We have several fun mornings of exercise in Victoria Park planned and walking buses with Ginny of Mojo Moves, who is our local hero. You can see her pictured there. And before Easter, we'll have some Bee Friendly Trust planting workshops happening outside. So they'll be taking place with students from Oakfield and Critchill in the safe environment of their playgrounds. And then these planters will be placed on Oakfield and Nanny Road as very beautiful and necessary traffic calming measures. Yeah.
So I'm sure you'd be interested to know what improvements we're going to be making. So alongside a proposed timed closure of school streets, there are a lot of physical improvements that are already underway. And the image that you have there is the race table and crossing that has been installed outside Oakfield Academy. There are other similar crossings which will be installed. There are other similar crossings which will be installed along the full length of the route. In addition to that, there will be in certain locations footway build-outs. We demonstrated the benefit of footway build-outs in the town centre, where we've shortened the crossing point at key strategic points for those crossing the road, that the same principle will apply in school streets. So we're introducing that measure. We're going to introduce some very innovative surface patterns outside schools to alert drivers to the fact that they're entering a school zone. And these patterns have been designed in conjunction with the schools. So we've worked with the schoolchildren on these, and hopefully they'll feel some ownership of those patterns going in outside the school gates. Katie's already mentioned planters, those will be going in a number of locations, benches as well. And the aim here is to make the street environment much more pleasant for those walking along them. That will benefit everyone, really, that needs at some point to sit down on their route. And also cycle stands are going in to encourage that switch to cycling where it's possible. The other very important element to this scheme is the introduction of the extended 20 mile per hour zone. And on this plan, you'll see the extent of that. So the blue streets that you see there, where 20 mile per hour is going to be introduced for the first time, it's the dark blue. There are some existing 20 mile per hour zones which are already highlighted in light blue on this plan. And then where the actual restrictions are going to come in at school drop-off and pick-up times is the section between the Nunny Road and Oakfield Road crossroads to Broadway. The road from that junction towards Nunny, along Critch Hill, there is also another section a little lower down, which has proved to be problematical at White Mill Road. I think that's correct, isn't it? Sorry, White Mill Lane. And then also Park Road will be part of the school street zone. This is difficult to read, apologies for that because of the colour scheme, but I will just quickly run through with you what the actual closure trial will involve. So in Critch Hill, Oakfield Road and White Mill Lane, we'll see trial timed closures at the school drop-off and pick-up times, which in the case of schools in that area is between 8:10 and 9 o'clock in the morning, and 2:45 and 3:30 in the afternoon. And at Park Road, and just to highlight at this point, these times have been introduced in consultation with the individual schools. Park Road closures will be 8:25 to 8:55 in the morning, and 2:45 until 3:30 in the afternoon. We are working with Somerset Council on what is known as an experimental traffic regulation order. And Bill Lowe, who was here earlier, mentions the experimental traffic regulation order that he hopes will be introduced in Alexandra Road. But in order that these trial closures can be put in place, a traffic regulation order is needed. And what that traffic regulation order will specify is that there are some exemptions in terms of those who are not subject to the restrictions. So that will include residents living on those streets, seen there, highlighted in yellow, rebadsholders, buses, deliveries, and emergency services. We expect that those will still be able to travel through the closure zone at these times. And that is a common feature of these school street schemes up and down the country. There may be some tweaks to that as we approach the point at which we get the experimental traffic regulation order agreed. And we would be interested, any views there are in this room or indeed elsewhere about those exemptions before we finalise them. We're also investigating, and I can't promise this, but we are also investigating the introduction of walking buses whereby groups of children are actually taken by a responsible adult from a particular point into the school gate. These things have been trialled elsewhere. We know we're going to do something with Mojo Moves to encourage people to come forward and volunteer for these walking bus trials, but we're going to investigate the possibility of introducing those. And the other thing that we are investigating is the introduction of something known as Park and Stride, that's identifying some car parks where potentially parents can drop off their children safely and then walk the rest of the journey via a safe route to the schools. Again, these things are commonplace with other school street schemes. We haven't yet been able to put that in place, but we will be investigating that further and seeing if we can put that in place ahead of the trial, which we anticipate will start in the early part of the summer term. So that's in April, on a date to be confirmed, but that certainly is our target. And the last thing I wanted to say really, or to express, is what we think success will look like. We think that that will be more active journeys by children, and indeed others, on the school routes, fewer vehicle movements, lower traffic speeds. And I should highlight here that we will be introducing the new SIDS that we have acquired and getting those installed on the route at some point to help us to monitor speeds as part of this trial. And finally, this is something which is obviously more qualitative, but we will be measuring this nonetheless, is that we would like to hear people reporting that they feel safer and having more enjoyment of the street environment. So that really is the end to our presentation, but very happy if you've got any questions. I should just point out that we have invited a local resident to come along to the meeting tonight, who had expressed some concerns, had also posed some questions for us about the school streets zone. And I wonder whether we could enable them to ask their questions here. And obviously, we can, we're best to answer those questions tonight. So I think it's Ally, isn't it, Ally?
Yes, it's Ally.
Thank you, Peter and Katie. Welcome, Ally.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Peter, and thank you, Katie. And thank you too for allowing me to come to this meeting and to address and speak to Firstly, I'm really pleased, well gratified, to see that you have added your measurement of success. But that also just adds to some of the questions that I have here. When I Googled the safer school streets, some of the objectives are absolutely fabulous. And then, of course, when I looked, as you did, to see where these schools are, they're all mostly in London, in bigger centres like Bristol, Birmingham, as you have said. Froome, however, is a completely different kettle of fish altogether. So I think the questions that need to be asked for safer school streets are different to the questions that would be asked in a huge city, where the schools are found in the middle of suburbia or shopping areas, or where the streets are really busy. Avanti is different. Bright Stars is outside what I'm going to be talking about now, but still in the same bracket. But Trinity, Critch Hill, and Oakfield are all on the outskirts of Froome, which means that anybody going there has to travel through Froome to get to their schools. With the exception of a couple of years at Oakfield, all the children, Bright Stars, Critch Hill, Trinity children, have to be accompanied by an adult. They're too young to go on their own. They cannot cycle to school, or if they do, it means that their parents have to be cycling with them, which poses other questions as well. I love the idea of children exercising and being free and getting air in their hair. I need to also add as part of my introduction to you is that I've been involved with teaching and children all my life. So I appreciate the fact that children do need air in their hair, they do need to get exercise, they do need to get rid of all those wounds, and this is one of the best ways. So I'm not shutting you down on that, I'm just asking these awkward questions, I'm So do you know, talking about the displacement, I'm not sure that I do agree with that, because if the majority of our children have to be accompanied to school by their responsible adult, incidentally, I am one of those responsible adults. I'm currently childminding, and I've been doing the school run for 11 years. I do know, and I've seen road rage, I'm part of it. Do you know, from your research, how many children have to be transported to school because their parents have to drop them off and get themselves to school by car? Do you know how many children who are able to cycle or walk to school do in fact cycle or walk to school? Do you know how many people drop their kids off by car and go home and get into bed with a cup of coffee? And they've done that by car?
Would you like to respond to some of those points?
Of course, yes, thank you.
It might be easier to answer as we go along. I do know, I've been doing baseline surveys for several months. I don't have the figures with me now, but I can share them with you at a later date. They're actually very encouraging. I myself have children in the school street schools, and I'm very conscious of the dangers that are currently present. However, the numbers are encouraging. I have exact numbers of who travels by car, bike, on road. I also do know, I understand what you say about the majority, however, I also know that that's not true with Trinity and Oakfield. So Trinity children have to legally be dropped at the school gate by a parent. So we have five form entry, two classes, average 25 children per class. Don't have these numbers to hand, but you know, it's not an enormous amount. Oakfield, six form entry, four years, average 31 children per class. It's far greater. These children are mostly walking, cycling themselves currently. It has, that's the middle school system we have in France, that, sorry. I lived in France for years, I still am in that mindset. The vast majority of Oakfield children, aside from those that travel by public transport, and there is a number that travel in from Nunny, Melles, and other surrounding villages, the vast majority are travelling themselves. So the numbers do outweigh, unfortunately, or fortunately, the numbers that are travelling with parents.
Thank you, thank you for those answers, I'd like to see them. Now, if the majority of them are travelling by foot, it means that they are already travelling across roads like Broadway, coming across the butts, they are already travelling across dangerous roads. And they have got a long way to go until they get to these four or five closed roads. Do they not need to rather know how to live with traffic?
Yes, they do, absolutely. I agree with that. And I do live near the butts, so my child does walk. However, I do feel that she is safe, and she walks to school currently, not as safe as I'd like her to be, but we are teaching our children how to travel. Yeah, sorry.
Can I just bring in, can I bring in another councillor, please? And I'll come back to you, Ally, that's okay? Max, please.
So I just want to say some things that I think we've probably said before, but I think are worth saying again, that I think, I can't remember this precise statistics, but there are something like 27,000 people in Froome and 28,000 cars registered. So it's almost like, I think we always say this, there are no easy choices around this stuff. Somebody is going to be inconvenienced hugely, whatever we do. If we do nothing currently, and I live on Park Road, so I see it every morning, and it is horrific. And you know, I would, and I've done the school run, you know, my kids went to the college, and there were many times when I kind of thought they really should be walking, and then, Dad, you know. You know, so the late journey, sometimes not necessarily at 20 miles an hour, you know, all of those, it's like I've been there, I know all of this kind of stuff. So I don't think we're doing what we are doing lightly, and we absolutely understand. And whilst I take solace from Peter's comments about after an adjustment period, things settle down, the simple fact of the matter is that during that adjustment period, things will be pretty rocky, and there will be a lot of very angry people, and you know, and this is just the inevitability. But I think as councillors and as people who have got responsibility for this place, along with others, which I'll come to in a second, we have to try and enable the right choices. And right now, if people want to make the right choice, it's actually really difficult. The right choice is dangerous, the right choice is polluted, the right choice is all these things. And so we have to inconvenience some people, I think, we have to kind of do these things in order to incentivise and reward those people who want to do the right thing. And what happens over a period is that people will walk more, and those people who have to drive will probably still drive, but there will be hopefully less cars on the road to contend with overall. That's what the evidence shows over a period. And I accept the fact that, you know, much of the evidence comes from places like London and Bristol and Birmingham and all of those sorts of things. But you know, this is equally quite a congested place with an awful lot of people in quite a small concentration. So you know, I reiterate my support for the scheme, I don't suggest for a second it's going to be easy, but I think overall it's absolutely the right thing to do. I just might make a couple more points. It's fantastic that we did consultation, and it's fantastic that we've got baseline figures. I really would like to see them, and I'd like to know how many people were in the consultation. I kind of think we invest a lot, and we are investing more and more in community engagement. But it's about time, I think, we got really serious about numbers and understood our stats and all of those sorts of things, because that is, I think, what, you know, ultimately what will drive some of these things. So it's great that we had all those consultation events, but if only 500 people turned up for that, and that's less than 5% of the population, and that's not enough. And so we might need to rethink some of our methods so that we can get to a bigger number of people. And I know that's a wider debate, but I think it's really important. Second point I'd like to make is the letters that are going out about this are just going out in our name, and I don't think that's right. I think this is Froontown Council involved, so are all the schools, so is Somerset Council. And I kind of think we need to show that it's not just Froontown Council that's doing this, that we've got all sorts of backing across the piece. So I would like to see the logos of all of the schools, the logos of Somerset Council, the logo of Sustrad, all of those sorts of things, so that people kind of are clear that we're not just making this up. You know, this is something that is a kind of very major, you know, a major undertaking. So, you know, and I think it's the same when we say like, we are going to encourage walking buses, we are going to encourage, well, I don't think us as a town council should be doing that, frankly. I think that's something that schools should be leading, and walking buses and all those sorts of things. And Park and Stride was supposed to be one of the main things that was going to come in on Park Road when the Steiner School, as it first was, was supposed to have, you know, and they did it for about a week. And then they just abandoned the whole thing, and we now have the chaos that we have every morning. So I would like to see ownership of that much more broad, really, so that it's really clear that there are lots of people behind this, and lots of people trying to do a very difficult thing, but ultimately the right thing.
Thank you, Max. Yeah, some really interesting points raised there. I'm going to go back to Peter, and then Nick, and then Adam.
First of all, I just wanted to say that we did have some conversations with the schools about them supervising walking buses, but what came back was the view that they had limited capacity to do that amongst the staff. I mean, that's something that we will pick up again, but it may be that we need to look to other volunteers in the community to pick that up, but that certainly is a challenge in terms of involving the schools. Another thing that I just wanted to briefly say, and really it was in response to Ally, your reference to Broadway and the butts, one of the things that emerged from our consultation work over time was the feeling was that if we could secure crossings close to the junction of Oakfield Road and was that if we could secure crossings close to the junction of Oakfield Road and Broadway and Somerset Road and the butts, that would encourage many, many more people to actually walk to school. There is a feeling that those locations are, are very challenging, if not unsafe in terms of crossing the road. Some of you will be aware that the Department for Transport has actually agreed funding for crossings in those two locations. And we are now, we and Sustrans are currently in discussion with Somerset Council to see if they're prepared to manage a project to deliver those, those crossings by the time that the funding runs out, which is later this year. So appreciate that Somerset Council now has some challenges in terms of its own staff capacity, but it would, I think, at some point, it would be really helpful to, to chat with Somerset Councilors in the room and others to see how we can, we can take that particular initiative forward, because there is money available from DFT to enable those crossings to be installed. I'm also conscious that maybe there were some other questions that, that Ali had, but I'll leave, leave that for you to say.
Yeah, I'll do Nick and Adam and then I'll come back to Ali if you'd like to.
Thanks, I'll be very quick. Two things, one is the biggest threat to our young people, our children in this town is from injury through injury or death through cars, killed and seriously injured. It's the biggest threat and what are we doing about that? I think also the role of, it's my second term of cancer and our, our role is quite nebulous, I think. A lot of people think we are somehow have powers we don't have and those that know know we have very little powers. And I still remember my rather terrifying head teacher, who, when he stood up and said something, I and everyone else did something about it and Max's point around who is saying this is happening. It should, I think, be led in the comms, certainly very powerfully put by teachers who look after our community's childrens on a daily basis. Thanks.
Adam?
Hello, that's better. Hi. Yeah, Park and Stride is very important. I think that needs to be prioritised, to be honest. Question, in terms of the exclusions from not being allowed to drive through an area, would, will carers, paid and unpaid, be part of that? I think they should be considered as a, as a key thing. Some breakfast, getting, getting older people up in the morning or disabled adults and children, you can't, you can't ignore the fact that they need to be in that, that place. So please don't legally exclude people that need to be there. And also, how, how will this be enforced on the ground? Will there be people saying, stop, you can't come in? Or yes, you can? Or would it be up to voluntary, voluntary enforcement? Thanks.
Just on the issue of carers, I think that that's a point well made. And it's something that we will pick up with colleagues at Sustrans and Somerset Council when we discuss the detail of the experimental TRO. I think there is a case to be made for, for carers. They're, you know, really important to the residents on those streets. The second point is about enforcement. What we have said is that, is that we will encourage people to voluntarily observe these restrictions, that the emphasis will be on the extent to which that these roads can be made safer by people's voluntary actions. It is fair to say however, that there will be a legal experimental traffic regulation order in place, which, which means that if necessary, more formal enforcement action could be taken by Somerset Council and the police at some later date. I think initially, what we're relying on is for people to voluntarily observe these restrictions at the very beginning of the, of the project. And we will have, we will have people on the streets at the start of the trial. That includes not only ourselves, but also representatives from the project team at Sustrans. PCSOs have offered their support. And it's initially, it's going to be about advice and guidance, support and providing information where necessary. We hope it won't be necessary to formally enforce this. We hope that people will observe these restrictions, you know, in the interests of the safety of the young people. So that, that I think is our position at the moment on enforcement.
Thank you, Peter. I'd like to come back to Ali if you have any more points, please.
Thank you kindly. I'll be as quick as I can. Instead of just putting objections, I have what I think could also be considered a solution. If Nunny was a one-way up, excuse me, I'm not doing north, south, west, east. If Nunny was a one-way up and Critch Hill, one way to the right, past the front of, sorry, not Critch Hill, Oakfield. And then if Broadway was a one-way down, it would immediately be calming all the traffic. Buses could get through without having to fight with cars coming down. It would give you what you're looking for outside Critch Hill. In fact, all of these boxes would be ticked. The safe school roads boxes would be ticked with very little disruption to the rest of the people in that area. You could even have no parking directly in front of the Critch Hill School to enable parents who have to, to stop and drop and go. Oh, sorry, Oakfield, not Critch Hill, I've got Critch Hill written here. So they could stop in front of Oakfield and drop their children off and carry on to work. There would then be a right-hand lane would be created because no cars are coming in that direction. Children on their way to school would only have one direction of traffic to consider for their safety. The other, the other thing that I really, while I'm here and I have this in my hand, is that the Dommetts, Portland and the Nunny intersection is currently extremely dangerous. And a one-way section, a one-way system up there would cut that in half as well. So at this point, I want to say thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight and to talk to you and well done. I know, I'm in awe of the amount of work that has already gone into what you are doing. So thank you for that. If you were able to save the, what you're spending on these roads, you could put it into the missing link and we could go right out there from, into the countryside very quickly. But ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening and good evening. I think at this point we'll tip out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ali, for coming. Points very well made. I think you mentioned, Ali, that you might leave some other questions. Be considered if you'd like to leave those with Sarah or Rachel there, that would be great. Thank you. Thanks very much for coming.
We've also got some questions from Helen Kay. Do you want to hear them now? So Helen asks, do we, do we know if the schools still teach road safety? In the old days, the police or road safety officers used to visit and do half-day sessions about road crossings. And her second point is for Park and Stride, can we get the car park at Bad Cooks used for just dropping off children between the same hours of operation as safer schools?
Yeah, the second point, thank you Helen. The second point, yes, this is one of the options we are exploring. First point, I can't confirm it's still part of the curriculum as such. However, I do know that recently, Oakfield have had visits from Somerset, teaching road safety. However, I will need to clarify if that is something that they do on a regular basis and how many of their children that reaches. As part of our engagement with schools, during taking groups of children out to map these walking wheels, that is also something I've been doing with children, talking about drop curbs, what they mean, driveways, just alerting children to their environment around their schools. But yes, Helen, I can look into it and find out further information.
Very much. I've got Andy and then Lisa and then hopefully we can start to bring this.
Can I just come back on Katie's question and Helen Kay's question? I've just looked up, it's on the curriculum for key stage two, which covers road safety. And it's also picked up again in PSHE for citizenship, road safety in the secondary curriculum. I can't tell you exactly what's in there, but I can tell you that they do do it.
Thanks Lisa. So that covers the first two years of Oakfield, those students that are travelling on their way.
Yep. Thanks Lisa. Andy?
Just wondering if as part of your baseline data, you've collected anything about how many teachers drive to schools versus how many car parking places there are for teachers at those schools?
Not yet, but it is on my agenda and I hope to be able to share that information.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's one of the key problems we see certainly around the top of Nunny Road is during term time, the road is full of teachers' cars.
Yeah, actually in terms of what we're investigating, the ETRO and what that specifies, that's definitely something we're looking to.
Great, thanks very much. As somebody who visited lots of schools in my last job, it was a bane of my life trying to park somewhere near a school. Lots of, lots of cars taking up spaces. Okay, I think we're there. Thank you so much, Peter and Katie. Lots of detail, lots of facts and lots of information. Thank you so much. Okay, item number four, it's Peter Wheelhouse again.
So this will be an interesting shot for you of Badgers Hill. You may not have seen this one before, but this was recently taken with a drone. And it shows you the extent of the facility that we now have, we hold ownership of. Just some other contextual information for you is that the Frimtown Community Benefit Society have a 25-year lease on the property and they're responsible for its day-to-day management. And then there is a sublease or licence arrangement with Frimtown Football Club that enables them to continue to use the pitch and the other facilities. Another bit of contextual information for you is, is that you, as you may recall, last year, there was some success in securing grant aid to enable the facilities there to be repaired and improved. Some of the facilities are in a poor condition and they're in need of investment. The funding is coming from the Community Ownership Fund, which is managed by the Department for Leveling Up and also the Premier League Stadium Fund. The Premier League actually puts money into non-league football. And in this instance, they have awarded £150,000 towards the cost of repairs and improvements and the Community Ownership Fund, just over £364,000. And together, that will enable some improvements to be made in the clubhouse, which is in real need of, of investment, but also the installation of new changing rooms and other sporting facilities for the site. Important thing as far as this report is concerned is that both funders have indicated that they want to see a legal charge on the asset. Now unfortunately, it's taken us some time to understand what that actually means, whether that, they want to see the legal charge against either the freehold or the leasehold asset. Recently, however, they confirmed that it would be against a 25-year lease, not the asset that is owned by Frimtown Council. And the other thing is that both funders require a restriction on our freehold asset and a deed of variation to the lease that we've entered into with the CBS. And I'll just explain what all of that means. First of all, what the charges will mean is that if the Community Benefit Society defaults, funders will be able to have a say in reassigning the lease to another party in order to either complete the funded project as applied for, or to recover part of all of the grant funding, including interest in the funders' costs. That's what those legal charges mean. We hope very much that that will not happen and we will be working very hard to ensure that it doesn't. But as you can imagine, with such a substantial investment being made, we want in some way to protect that investment. As far as the restriction on the freehold is concerned, what that would mean is that the council could not sell its freehold interest in the stadium without the prior approval of the funders. That seems a reasonable proposition and requirement. And finally, there is this deed of, of, sorry, deed of variation to the lease. Now what specifically that variation would mean is that in the event that the council had to exercise its break or forfeiture clauses in the lease, it would enter into a deed of covenant with the funders committing our adherence to the terms and conditions of the grant. So effectively, we would have to take responsibility for completing the repair and improvement project to their satisfaction. And the other variation to the lease is in the event of default of the CBS, FTC would enable the assignment of the lease subject to our prior approval. In order that these things are put in place, it's, it will be necessary for us to incur some further cost in terms of engaging lawyers to prepare the necessary legal documentation. The scale of the cost is not one that we had foreseen and it became clear quite recently. But we expect the, the cost to be in the region of nine thousand pounds. The request is to fund those costs using budgets available in the new project's R&amp;D budget. The last thing I'll say about this is that, for you to agree tonight, these proposals is really critical in terms of enabling the grant funding, the capital grant funding to be drawn down to complete the repair and improvement project. Without these things in place, we think it will be impossible to draw down that money. Start has already been made with the, with the revenue funding that's been made available by the Community Ownership Fund. And I just wanted to add that at the moment, I'm working closely with both the CBS and the football club and the appointed architect to prepare detailed proposals for the new changing rooms and, and meeting facilities. And we are planning to hold a drop-in session this coming Saturday at the clubhouse to enable people to see emerging designs. And there will be a further opportunity following Saturday and we'll be issuing a press release and other communications about that tomorrow, including a letter drop to local residents. So work is proceeding on that. We will not be able to draw down the capital funding to deliver the repair and improvement project until these, these particular measures are in place.
May, Peter, shall we take some questions? I know we've got a couple waiting. Max, please.
So I'm really sorry, Peter. I feel I need a translator. I feel, I don't really understand what I'm being asked to agree to. In the event that FTC had to exercise the break or forfeiture clauses in the lease, it would enter into a deed of covenant with feeders, funders committing FTC's adherence to the terms and conditions of the grant. I really don't, I feel like I need a, what I sense is going on here is that essentially the, whoever they are, the lenders are essentially saying, the risk is going to be carried by the town council, which seems to have been the case throughout this entire thing, to be quite honest. And always the, you know, the imperative somehow is like, without this, the whole thing will crash, without this, the whole thing will fall. But it just feels like we seem to get deeper and deeper into a kind of mire. So I would really appreciate a much more plain English explanation of this because I frankly don't understand what I'm agreeing to. And I don't know if everybody, everybody else feels the same, but I have, this, the language is legalese and we need an interpretation.
Sorry, Peter. Lisa, do you want to come in?
Yes, let me give it a go. So initially, in conversations, Deluck, who is the major funder and the Premiership Fund, the secondary funder, wanted their grant secured against either the leasehold or the freehold. Frimtown Council owns the freehold. We issued a lease to the Frimtown Community Benefit Society. It was weighing heavily towards it being on the freehold for quite some time. We unlocked a conversation with Deluck and, and managed a move to have them put the covenant on to the leasehold, which means that the Frimtown Community Benefit Society is responsible for is responsible for delivering on the conditions of the lease. That is the repair and improve project. If the Frimtown Community Benefit Society does not adhere to the conditions of the lease, delivering the repair and improve project, then the, what you had said suggests that someone else will need to be put in place to ensure that the conditions of the grant funding are met, which are namely the repair and improve project. So that could be Frimtown Council, who then steps in if the CBS collapses. Frimtown Council is not responsible at this point for delivering the repair and improvement project. That's something that we were very clear on. It had come up in conversations that we've had as councillors. Do we want it on the leasehold or the freehold? The responsibility for the repair and improve project is with Frimtown Community Benefits Society. That's what we're looking to approve. Other than if it doesn't, if the CBS don't achieve it, then it shouldn't, it shouldn't be us that suffer.
Just to, just to add.
To respond to that, yep.
Just to add and clarify, I think that the first step would be in the event of some kind of failure on the part of the CBS, we would try and identify another party to actually take responsibility for the repair and improvement project by, for example, the assignment of the lease. However, should that not be possible, then obviously, you know, FTC may have to, may have to step in. It is, it is simply putting safeguards in place should the worst happen. And that's understandable with such a large sum of money being invested by the government and by the Premier League.
Thanks, Peter. Anita, please.
Yeah, thank you. There's an awful lot of this, I must say, is a bit muddling for me. It just, maybe I've got this wrong, but it just feels as though if the CBS are in charge of the project in terms of actually delivering the project, if we then stand back and say that if they fail, we will pick it up somehow. We'll get another group to come in and manage it or, you know, we'll pay the nine grand for all the legal fees and things. What incentive is there for them to actually keep going? It feels to me as though they need to have some, something in there which is going to hold them to account. And it just feels as though they're being absolved of all responsibility. Is that my, am I wrong or, yeah, okay.
Can I just say that legally, they're responsible for delivering it. They, the CBS has signed a funding agreement with the Community Ownership Fund and with the Premier League Stadium Fund, which indicates that they are responsible, they're legally responsible to deliver the project. However, I think that the point that you make is, is well made in terms of ensuring that they stick to their guns and you can be assured that, that we will be working with the CBS to ensure that that happens. As you, as you know, both Lisa and I are representatives of Frimtown Council on the board of the CBS. But there are other mechanisms that we can use to ensure that they stick to their guns and they deliver. So you're right to raise that, but there are safeguards.
You want to come back, Anita?
Only just to say, it just feels as though there is no financial imperative for them at all, is there really?
Nick, you've got a point, and then Lisa.
Yeah, thanks for trying to explain this to us. It is complicated. But it's not like we're getting mortgages on these. We're being offered grants, aren't we? The football club effectively, the Community Benefit Society are being offered grants to refurb the buildings, build new buildings. So it's capital and revenue in that budget, I'm assuming. I saw there was £50,000 allocated for an architect or architects.
There is £50,000 revenue funding, which is intended to cover the professional fees needed to deliver the repair and improvement project. That money has been drawn down by the CBS to enable the project to be managed, developed principally by the architect, but with support from CBS and ourselves.
And my question was, can't some of that money be used to pay the legal fees?
Unfortunately, it will, it will not cover those costs. The £50,000 is taken up with, with the professional fees needed to manage the project. Legal fees are not accounted for in that sum.
And, I mean, obviously there are people more qualified than me probably to look at this side of things, but that seems quite a big set of professional fees for what won't be a very complicated or I'm sure a very extravagant build.
The reality is that it will involve not just the involvement of an architect, but also a structural engineer, and also an advising plumbing and heating engineer. Actually, the, in particular within the clubhouse, there are some complex pieces of work to work through to ensure that we get the right solution for the building. So it will be necessary to bring in that professional expertise in order to deliver the project.
Thanks, Peter. I've got Lisa.
I just want to remind everybody why we got involved in this project in the first place. We, we all said that this was for community benefit. And I just want to share a few details about what's been going on at the clubhouse recently. So the reason why this repair and improve project exists is because it is not currently a safe place. We have some health and safety concerns. There is some essential improvements that need to be made. That being said, over the past 12 months, Pod Disco has gone back to that as a venue for their disabled disco once a month. They've started a new darts club that includes students from Frim College and is really building a following. SASP, which offers free childcare over the school holidays, has been using that as a venue. There are 70 community and voluntary organisations who went to an event there and talked about how they could use it and are looking to use it more. There's talk about using the kitchen facilities as catering for other charities to raise funds. So this is what we are trying to achieve. There happened to be a football club using the site at the minute, which has a lease.
And Fair Frim have Sunday lunches there once a month.
Thanks, Sam. So this is what we're trying to achieve. We are not trying to achieve a clubhouse for a football club. We are trying to achieve a space that the community can use, a space that works for the residents of Frim, and we're trying to improve that as an asset. Peter does have pretty tight control over the repair and improve project as well, working directly with the architect. So I just wanted to remind everybody what it is that we're doing with this project.
Thanks, Lisa. I've got Andy.
Yeah, I just sort of wanted to bring us back to the structure that Peter has described because as I see it, it's a series of failsafes that the funders are asking for. And they've agreed that our push, that the first failsafe is on the leasehold that we've granted to the CBS. Only if that fails, do they then require the right to look for another party to take on that lease and therefore for us to agree that if they find that other party, we'll agree to that leasehold change. And then only if that fails, does it come back to, actually, you guys have the freehold. It's, it's down to you to sort through the details.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Can we move to the recommendation? Are you happy, Peter?
Yes, and thank you, Andy. You've probably explained that far better than I could ever do. Hopefully, there's some clarity now around this. But yes, we can.
Okay. Are we happy with the recommendations as they are? Who'd like to propose? I've got Anne Hills, seconded, Andy Jones. If you'd like to vote, please. Oh, we can't, we can't.
No, you can.
Oh.
She can't.
Well, she can. Well, we can.
The recent Lisa isn't voting is because she's got that kind of prejudicial intent because she's a director of the CBS and I think there's just needs to create some clearly water. And Max. Abstention. So that's passed by majority.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter. Stay there. I did offer him a chair, actually, to save him getting up and down. Item five, to approve recruitment of a new post and other amendments to existing management. Peter, again.
First of all, I just, just wanted to set the context for this one because at the last council meeting, councillors will be aware that a new work programme for our work in the area of climate action was, was agreed. And that has some bearing really on the proposal that you have before you tonight, which is to recruit a climate action lead as a replacement for the resilience manager. And there are also some line management changes that are proposed as a consequence of that. So as you may have seen from the report, the revised work programme reflects a desire for us to have much greater impact, build on the successes that we've already achieved around climate action, particularly through the Green and Healthy Frim Programme, but also other things. And it's about taking stock of what we've achieved. It's, it's about engaging the community to develop a new and ambitious townwide adaptation and mitigation strategy that very importantly fits with our new council strategy. So what we're thinking is that there is a piece of work that needs to be done alongside the work on the new strategy that has a focus on climate action. And it's also about seeing if we can secure greater coordination between all the bodies that are operating locally in this space. And unsurprisingly, if you look at the job, the job description that we've presented as part of this report for information, those areas of work are reflected in the main responsibilities of this post. So there is an important context for this. And the other thing that you'll see is that we're not proposing on this occasion that the postholder has line management responsibility or responsibility for any of the major projects that we're currently delivering. And there's a reason for that because we feel that we need to give the postholder time and the space and the freedom to focus on, on being creative, thinking strategically, building relationships in the community and helping to develop that new adaptation and mitigation strategy. And we feel that if they are encumbered by line management responsibilities or project management responsibilities, they may not be as effective as they could be in this role. That has consequences. If they're not line managing, then who will line manage the resilience team? The reality is that that's a responsibility that I have taken on since Nikki Brain left. However, there are, there are some tweaks that we're suggesting for the future. And it's, and it's reflecting the connection between the work that we're involved with on resilience and climate action and, and also building greater biodiversity within the town and the activities of other teams. So alongside the proposal to recruit a climate action lead, there is also a proposal that the environment manager becomes the line manager for Jo Morris. She's spending more and more of her time on biodiversity. It makes sense for us to try and bring her work and the work of the environment team together. And also, when it comes to the work of our community retrofit lead, Sally Richards, that she is line managed by Jane Llewellyn as our planning and development manager. We want to build those, those links between our retrofit work and the work we're doing on planning. We feel that there are going to be a lot of benefits from, from that. And in order to maintain continuity and to reflect my involvement in terms of project managing school streets and also our activities on Green and Healthy Frim, I will remain the line manager for the other staff. So those are the proposals. Does he take any questions?
Thank you, Peter. Do we have any questions or comments, please? Lisa.
Yeah, just for clarity, how many of those posts get paid through our budget? And how many are paid through Green and Healthy?
Currently, the posts of Climate Action Researcher/Evaluator and the Community Retrofit Lead, and also a proportion of the work that Jo Morris is pursuing, those things are funded by Green and Healthy Frim. The other things are actually funded directly by ourselves.
Mel.
I'm not opposed to this, but the recommendations seem to conflict with one another. So it says that we recruit a permanent position for the climate action lead, but we have a temporary pilot of the management arrangements. I'm quite sure how we could go back to where we were. We've already appointed somebody on a permanent basis. And I assume that the permanent post, even though the salary is yet to be determined, and I assume that's by somebody externally, will not match the post that was originally there because that had line management responsibilities.
I can't, I can't really comment on the salary question. The, I don't, I don't see a conflict in terms of a trial arrangement on line management. You know, my, my belief is, is that the climate action lead can operate under my line management alongside those tweaked line management arrangements. There's no, there's no barrier there in terms of enabling them to get on with their job. I, I know potentially maybe what you're asking is about the proposal to make the climate action lead a permanent position. I think, I would say that that reflects how important our climate action work is in this organisation. I would hope that councillors feel that it's important enough to make this, this role a permanent role rather than a temporary role. And it might actually assist in our recruitment for us to do so rather than to make this a temporary contract.
Okay. I accept all that, but I'm quite concerned about you as deputy town clerk taking on too many roles in what we've heard tonight already. Your involvement in the football club, your involvement in this and what was your current responsibilities, all of which are quite large and diverse. So I don't expect you to comment on that. I just think somebody needs to say it.
Thank you, Mel. Yes, I think he's been quite busy at the lectern tonight, I have to say. Thank you very much, Peter. Are we all happy to go with the recommendations? Yep. Proposed Nick Dove, seconded Steve Tanner.
That's by majority. You abstaining. So it's my majority and Mel's abstaining.
Thank you all very much. And item six, last item, it's not Peter, it's Nick. Thank you. Aha, fine, thanks. Right. So this is a kind of update really on what we've been doing as the Town Centre Working Group. You may not all know, but I've assembled a You may not all know, but I've assembled a team of all-star councillors. So there's myself, Mel Asher, Lisa, Mark, and Sarah is surprisingly part of the group as well. We've been working, fortunately, with the help of Rob and Rachel, and of course Peter, because he does everything, on developing a plan. And I'm just going to run through some highlights of that now. First of all, I guess the most important thing for us really is, and it goes back to the safer school streets issue, is how do people get across the town centre safely? You will remember, I'm sure, that we had phase three of the Town Centre Works, another legacy project left over from Mel's previous time here. A lot of money spent in the town centre with much praise from many residents. One of the problems right at the last minute was we were unable to have two courtesy crossings, crossing over from the Boar Cross to the George on one side and to the bottom of Stony Street on the other. We think that's a really, really important thing to get right, and Peter has kindly agreed to take that up. I think there's maybe an opportunity with the work that's being done on crossing points in the other part of the town to maybe persuade Somerset Council to do a bit of work on looking at possibly at least those two crossing points there. I think we could all find other places in the town where we could do with better crossing points or crossing points that were in a place that were logical rather than illogical. Again, it would be really great if the likes of Dawn, where's Matthew gone? It's always Dawn. Dawn, if you and your fellow councillors could help us push for that. I mean, it's really shocking how you watch people just waiting to try and cross right in the centre of town and having to wait for motorists who clearly have got no intention of stopping. Improving planting, places to sit, and delivering essential repairs. This is a kind of evolving project. I'm not going to go on a lot here, because I could and nobody wants that. But we've been trying to work behind the scenes with groups of volunteers from the town centre, people who've got businesses who live in the town centre, to look at ways to divide up the town centre and then work on establishing what would make that space look better. Frankly, that's lost some impetus. A lot of people have got other jobs to do and haven't managed to put in the time that they thought they initially would have. So we're focusing on a couple of areas to start with, and the idea to make them a sort of exemplar for the rest of the town. And that would be looking at things like clearing up where rubbish is currently dumped in a really unpleasant and unattractive way, putting more planters, lighting, even a living wall in one point. So some areas that we are focused on, and we're working with another small group of local residents and business owners who are helping us to come up with a design which we will bring to council and talk about. And part of that process, as we talk through it and work through it, is to understand that we need to come up with a general idea of what the style would be. Otherwise, we may have different looking planters in different parts of the town or something that won't quite work, just have a common thing, even if it's just a common material and a common colour. We have got, thanks to councillors, officers, we've had an agreed budget of £25,000 put aside to try and help us to progress some of these things. One of the key issues that I want us to be able to develop is the relationship between people who own commercial property in the town centre and people who run businesses and residents. Because there's a perfectly legitimate way for property owners, business property owners, commercial property owners, to use some of their income from their property that they can write off against tax if it is spent on things that would make the building and would make the place more attractive to rent. So I've spoken to a couple of people about that, and that's part of the plan. So when we come up with an area and we say, this is what we'd like to do, we need to find out what it costs and then bring in the people who own property there and say, how would you like to contribute or will you contribute to this, please? And there is a benefit for you. Not only will your property be more valuable and more rentable, but also you'll probably pay less tax or you'll have it written off against some of your tax. The recruitment and the work of Mike, our town centre ranger, is extraordinary. It's great. He's really, really popular in the town centre. A silly example, I was meeting Max, actually, about two weeks ago, and I stopped to chain my bike up outside the pub that used to be called, the pub is now called The Ship. And I noticed the brand new signs that Jane eventually got into our town centre, one that was scribbled all over. And then there's another bit of graffiti down below, and I turned my phone and tried to send photos to Rob, because my phone doesn't send photos to his for some reason. But anyway, 45 minutes later, I came out, it had all been removed, and Mike had been out there and removed it without anyone even realising. He's really doing well, and please, if you see him, congratulate him and tell people what he's doing, because it's really, really good. Another thing we talked about is events and lighting. Events, I think, are one of the ways that we can work through a kind of programme of events and establish things that will bring people into the town to spend money in our independent businesses and shops, restaurants, bars, is a really good way to put Brum on the map. And there's some quite exciting things happening this year. We've set up an events advisory group, which I think is going to meet every two months. And the idea is to obviously look at what we already have in the calendar, and look at what we need to have oversight and management of, and then look to move to the model where hopefully people in the town, businesses in the town, will come to us and say, we want to put on this event. And we say, great, fantastic, this is our guidance or suggestion, how you do it. So they lead on it and they work on it, and we are a sort of supportive part of that. I know that the beautiful Christmas lights we have coming across our street particularly and Marketplace, some of those need replacing. One of them, I didn't think worked all over the Christmas, I think, they're quite old. That triggered a discussion with some of the traders, particularly in Cheap Street, Stony Street, Palmer Street, Catam Hill, about the very thin lights that we put up over Christmas, asking, could they have them on all year round from dusk to, say, midnight? I think personally it creates quite a magical feeling. You walk through them, you think, oh, it looks lovely. It also makes people feel a little bit safer. So we'll be coming back to council in March with a proposal around that. Couple more things quickly, empty shops. A lot of talk about empty shops and what they look like in the town. If you walk around, I'm sure most of you do, I certainly do, there are very few empty shops. And those that empty have usually got little signs saying, new business coming soon. It's a really positive feeling, I think, in the town centre. I think those that have closed down have been those that weren't really commercially viable, just unlucky in the timing or what their business was. But there's a very positive sense among the community about what the possibility is, what the energy is. And it's just a question if they can, again, another business owner said to me, we are all living month to month, and I get that, if you work in that environment, that's quite often the case. But there's a pretty positive feeling. The empty premises in our more iconic streets, there are plans for. Cheap Street have two premises that are underneath the TSB building that have been empty for two years. We finally had agreement from the people leasing at TSB to work with Rachel to put something attractive in the windows there. So when you walk in a cheap street, that'll be there. All of the bank buildings, the empty bank buildings have now been leased. I'm just waiting to find out exactly what's happening in that West one. And the Shoe Zone Building, well done, Rob, finally, finally, it's been boarded up at the front, so there's a door in so the NHS can go in there and show potential purchases of the building around. But it stops people sleeping in there, begging in there, leaving the detritus that goes with that, the sort of vermin, the unhealthy area that it became. And just to reassure people, we did speak before to the homeless team, who manage homelessness in Somerset, to talk about, you know, will we be doing the right thing? Would it be right to do this? And they were very positive that we should work to board that space up, we should make it an area that is not going to encourage people to live in there or sleep in there, because that's not a safe place. It's dirty, it's unsafe, it's unclean. Sadly, within 24 hours, there's some graffiti on there suggesting that we're anti-homelessness and so on, but I'm afraid that was always inevitable, something was going to happen to that property as soon as they put up something. We've now got a new town centre barman, sorry, a town centre barman employed by ID Verdi. Hopefully, he will stay a long time, but Mike, our town centre ranger and the barman will work together. It's really useful that Mike used to be the barman, so he can phone up and say, look, this needs doing. So it's quite a dynamic relationship. And then I think finally, Discover Brum and the promotion of Brum. We were going to have a meeting last night. Last night, unfortunately. Rachel's assembled a really interesting group of people. They couldn't make it, so we've had to postpone that and we'll rearrange. But that's a really, really important part of it. There's been a number of references in the past few months about the importance of how we use a sort of digital platform to engage the public. I know, Max, you wrote something about how do people engage at the moment is quite a, you go in and you can't really have a conversation there, whereas we're moving away from that as a society. And I think that's it. What's this about, Community Toilets Project? We know about that. I mean, the loo's at the marketplace, really important we have those, we're going to pay for those and run them. And you're a man of a certain age, it's damn near important to have a loo right in the middle of the town, isn't it, Phil? Right, that's it, a bit of a whiz through. Any questions?
Go on, please.
I'm just noticing the ID Verdi issue. I mean, I suppose Paul knows a lot more about this as well, but they obviously are contracted and you can't take anything from them until their contract expires. But they are meeting their KPIs, which is very interesting, because nobody on the ground thinks they are, but that's part of the contract. I think the best thing to do to ensure that they don't get a renewed contract is to advise the council every time something goes wrong or is not up to scratch, so they can build up a database, really. So when the contract is up for renewal, there's a reason to say, no, we don't want it. But up until then, can't do anything about it.
Yeah, thanks, Dawn. I mean, I looked in great detail, as did Rob, at the contract. I mean, their KPIs are nonsensical, they basically mark their own homework. But, you know, again, it's how waste is dealt with in this town is pretty nonsensical. You know, we have, I think, 11 private companies collecting commercial waste on different days, so it's dumped sometimes for days at the bottom of Cheap Street or somewhere. It's not good at all, and I hope we can find a way to get a much better contract or deliver that service better. Thanks. Thanks, Nick. Thank you very much, Town Centre team. We have a very enthusiastic, energetic and supportive town crier now, who's willing to get very much engaged in promoting the town, Town Centre, as a small businessman himself. And I hear that the mayor and deputy mayor are pretty good at supporting events as well, so anything we can do. Great, thank you all very much indeed. Thank you for those people online, anybody that was watching, and thank you, team. Thank you all for attending this evening. Our next meeting will be on the 13th of March, Wednesday, at 7pm. Have a good evening all and see you soon. Thank you.